Their sales and spend hundreds of hours training every year. And some of them can't afford a cellphone. You know, I mean, I want to look at this from my perspective. It's protecting Franklin County, but we're doing it with volunteer labor and we're giving that for free. So, you know, not everybody has cellphones, not everybody has high technology. This radio system can be fixed. And it's as good as anywhere. Other fire departments use VHF and UHF. You mentioned the ambulance service a while ago. The ambulance is required to have all of the state med channels, which are UHF channels in their vehicles. So it's not like, you know, we're beating a dead horse here. This is technology that's in use every day all over Florida and all over this country. So, you know, like I said, just be very careful before you jump because you want to make sure that you're doing the right thing here. And I appreciate all that you do and all the research that you're doing. Thank you guys and I'm going to leave it with you.
Why would you not incorporate something that you can have, you know, easy way of communicating between all parties? Would it be your hospital? You know, it'd be the, I mean, I just believe in one system does it all, but the cost, I mean, you need to look at the cost also. But, you know, you said that the 800 megahertz that they could do pretty good, you know, with the cost on per radio, $14 a month, that's not bad. Because I know UHF and a VHF, you are limited on how far you can speak on them things unless you get a booster and then that's going to cost money too.
And our sheriff's department, they do dispatch for all emergency services in the county, correct?
Right.
Not just, you know, not just the sheriff's department?
We dispatch for the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, Caribou Police Department, Apalachicola Police Department, WHEMS, ambulance services, and we do all the fire departments.
Right. Well, if and there's any dispatch that needs to go to FHP, does it go through y'all as well?
We communicate with their dispatch.
So, yeah, I mean, all emergency services?
And I'm going to take this time to thank Renee because she has sure helped in this situation. She's very, very knowledgeable on this stuff. When y'all get the new console panels and stuff in, I'm going to be over there and look at them.
They are in?
They are in?
They are in. And I just want to let you know, we do have paging capability. We page WHEMS. WHEMS gets, they get their page on those 800 radios.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it is, that is doable. And Commissioner Sanders, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We love you back to call.
If there are any more public comments?
Hello. Sarah Hines, Administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Franklin and Gulf. In public health in Franklin County, I just wanted to say that we quickly learned that no one passes go without the approval of Commissioner Sanders. As early as I am in my career as Administrator for the Health Department, I just wanted to say that I really did appreciate those smart, very strong questions so that you could, like Ms. Marcia said, speak and vote with your conscience. That meant a lot.
That's right.
Your strong leadership, as mentioned by so many today, helped to build other leaders in the community. And how many others can say that? So I just wanted to say thank you for helping to improve this community and for being a role model for Franklin County, especially our young girls.
Thank you, Sarah. Can I ask Sarah a couple of questions, Mr. Noah?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind. I know you're with the Health Department.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to be having issues, we're having issues now with septic tanks since Hurricane Michael. Don't you all feel like that's a pretty much a big priority right there?
It's a huge priority for us.
And I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am. We immediately asked for an environmental health strike team to come provide assistance. We've got permitting processes in place for septic tanks. And so it is a priority every day and will continue to be so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And to keep it on the front burner because that's going to determine a lot of stuff in the next few weeks and months as far as whether, I mean, because I'm already getting requests sent to me by property owners on Dog Island and different places wanting to go on the beach and scrape the dirt up, put it back underneath their house to stabilize the house.
Right.
And I'm saying, but there's a septic tank sitting out there or there's an aerobic system sitting out there. You've got to be careful what you do and the powers that be. I may have a little power here as a commissioner, but I don't tell the state, begin to tell the state what to do.
Yeah, our first round of business was going out to each property to assess whether they were in good stance or if they were damaged. So we've been working on the assessment.
Well, and because I'm going to tell you my exact reason for asking that because I've been down to Alligator Point, contrary to what some people say. I've been down to Alligator Point and I've saw the damage. And although the house is standing.
Right.
When you look up there, when you're on this road and you look up there and you've got the concrete around the piling way up there and the septic tank's way down there and it's about a seven foot difference, that's a problem.
It is, it is.
That's a problem.
Yes.
So I want to make sure, to reiterate with the board, that is going to have to be a priority for y'all in the future because condemnation or stuff like that, because you're going to have some of these property owners that's wanting to go in there and shore up their house real quick to keep from any more damage happening, but yet they have to kind of this board to answer that. So y'all need to be careful, Alan, y'all need to be careful.
Thank you for bringing it up. So it is a priority for us. We can probably report out at the next meeting related to septic tank renewals, just to keep you guys updated on all the projects that we're working on post-storm recovery. We're continuing to support our medical system of care as well. We've got tetanus still available as well as flu vaccinations at the Health Department for responders, for residents. We are updating the Community Resource Guide for folks who have been displaced. And public health messaging, I think Mr. Moreau brought a folder of different environmental health-related public health messages that we've been sharing with our residents. And we sat with David at the EOC one of those days early on to kind of promote that information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Any more public comments?
I'll change hats this time. Will Kendrick, Representative Congressman Neil Dunn. As you know, in light of Hurricane Michael, now is a good time to look at any projects that you have outstanding, any that may have been initiated or any that may not have been initiated that you've been thinking about. It's always a good time to look at regionalization of services. I'd ask you to look at that. Commissioner Sanders brought a good point with septic tanks. As you know, there's a lot of money that will filter down to the counties and the cities as, after we start to go through this process, even though we're four weeks in and for some that's a long time, in the scheme of things and funding federal projects and programs, that's a very short time. So we expect a announcement today around noon time by the USDA secretary that will help timberlands, those folks to the north of us that had tremendous losses and timber losses. And so we expect some announcements on that as far as harvesting salvaged timber and those things. We currently work on, are working with the governor to try to increase our weight limits on the interstates to get that lumber pushed as well. So a lot of that coming out of the Apalachicola and other forests can get to the mill as quick as possible. So if there's any questions or anything in the future, please don't hesitate to give us a holler. That's what we're here for.
Any more public comments?
Good morning, Commissioner. How y'all doing?
Are you stoked up, Howard?
No, I'm good. But I just got a couple items on the storm and I always do, continue cleaning up through the county from the storm. And the main issue, which Alan was talking about, which I know, Alligator Point, Alligator Point, I mean, every time the water gets high, it's subject to flood, flooding that road.
I don't know what to do there.
So if you get a little squall, a little storm, and you've got a good south wind, southeast wind, that road's going to go under. So I don't know, which, you know, it takes us a half a day just to go down there to get a crew together on the weekend, just to, you know, to get down there to pick that road back. But I don't want the road to get high and people flooded and the road need deep water and people trying to get in and out.
We have a sign down there that says four-wheel drive only, drive at your own risk. At their time, during the storm, because I drove down there with Jeannie, we didn't use a four-wheel drive vehicle, we two-wheeled, but we're not taking that sign down because it could easily be a situation where someone gets stuck down there and they, you know, I mean, it's an untenable situation, but I don't have a short-term solution. Other than closing the road down, no one can drive on. I mean, that's the alternative because we, you know, it's just going to be a hazardous situation. Hopefully a limited hazard situation, but a hazardous situation for the next period of time.
We'd like to ask for the board's approval that we put a sign up subject to flood.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Put any sign up you want. I mean, all signs better.
Ready to vote?
Now, you can go ahead and do, you can go ahead and do that till your power is rose to, yeah, because we know that it is subject to, not even three foot.
Well, and you're right with the gulf. I mean, you can spit in the gulf when you're riding your vehicle.
It's like Alan said, the gulf is getting closer and we've been seeing this. And we were good for, what, 13 years? 13 years we were good.
Yeah.
But then Mother Nature wants it better, worse than what we do.
Yeah. And another thing, all the road department crew is going to miss you and we thank you for what you've done for, I know for 20 years, but I've known y'all ever since I've been with the county. So, and we want to thank you for what you did for us.
Thank you, Howard. And y'all have been part of my family since 1979. And y'all always will be. I've got a special place in my heart, but I thank you. And anytime y'all up there, just stop by and get you a cold glass of tea.
We should look about some fried chicken with that tea.
How about some baked chicken?
That'd sound good.
Okay, we'll do that. Hey, one thing I want to bring up underneath Howard, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, is over the weekend, we had a fatality down at Ball Point.
Yes, ma'am.
And at Ball Point, it's what we call the S-curves in there. A lady from Alligator Point was killed in a vehicle. And I've had a request from the resident down there at Ball Point to put a guardrail up, but I'm not quite so sure because it's a, it's pretty flat.
It's wide.
It's pretty flat in there and it's wide. So anyway, I'm going to have, I'm going to make a motion to have Howard get with the engineer and have the engineer to go down and look at if there is a feasibility study needed to do a guardrail or if, and also at the same time, get the reports of the traffic accident, accident, and make sure that there wasn't no other causes that caused it not to want putting up a guardrail. Because I personally don't think a guardrail needs to be there. I just think that it's just one of the things that happens.
And the roads, the roads open good.
Because it's level, it's not like a steep drop-off.
And the roads open, I mean, there's a little bit of swivel stuff. The shoulders are soft and anybody could have easily overcorrected. And once you, if you turn your wheel too sharp in sand, you're going to flip.
Well, and, you know, the Ball Point Road, we just paved it a few years ago. So it's a brand-new paving job, so it's not too much there. We don't have all that high traffic. But I'm going to just make a motion to have Howard and the engineer go out there and look at it and see if it wants a guardrail or not. And if it does, y'all come back with your recommendation to the board at the next meeting in November, if you don't mind.
I think clear.
That's my motion.
I've got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Matt. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And that's all I got at this time.
Okay, keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a good one.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fonda Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Fonda.
I did have one item here on the report. It's amnesty storm debris. Since the impact of Hurricane Michael, the Frank County landfills amnesty storm debris brought in by the residents to help with the cleanup in Franklin County. I'm asking for board direction on whether you want to just continue the amnesty or go back to tipping fee.
Ready to vote?
I'd like to ask a question if I could, Mr. Noah.
Go ahead.
Fonda, what's your recommendation for, what would you recommend?
Well, we have the contractor's answer. I would suggest that if they bring it in, we go back to tipping fee.
Because right now, if they leave it on the side, well, the contractor's going to pick it up, the contractor gets paid, right?
That's correct.
So we don't need to have private individuals in there because they can get free pickup on the side of the road by the contractor at this time.
Ready to vote?
That helps on our theme also, so I would say we oppose the tipping fee, right?
So we're just going, I guess I'll make a motion that we're going to stop amnesty of storm debris as of today.
I've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Matt.
I'm not saying that we're doing it with the best of intentions to help people, this is where they, until the storm debris stops on the side of the road, that's easier than just putting it on the side of the road.
There's also a safety issue, smaller vehicles coming in with the larger vehicles.
That's right, yeah.
Second by Commissioner Matt. Discussion order. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries.
Okay, Commissioner had something to come up yesterday. I did not put it on the report. We had a couple trucks come out of Gulf County hauling the storm debris. So I just need to know, do you want to accept it or refuse it? I spoke with one of the gentlemen, let them know that we weren't prepared for that. So space is a problem right now.
It is a problem.
Ready to vote?
Love to help the neighboring county, but we just.
We're going to be limited on how much we can help them though, as far as the space in the landfill there.
I want to clarify something for Mr. Will.
Yes, sir.
You're saying they brought debris from Gulf County to Franklin?
Yes, sir. And he said normally probably about six to eight loads a day.
Why, why would they be doing that?
They have nowhere, it's time to stage their storm debris.
They don't have no land. Using the thing with records, they can't, it's going to be a nightmare trying to keep their garbage, their debris away from our property. That's not a good idea.
Yes, I mean, if we had the space or was prepared for it then, it wouldn't be a problem. So, you know, yeah.
But our debris monitoring service is not their debris monitor.
That's correct.
So how are they monitoring what they're building?
They have, the company, DRC, I believe, is that correctly? They have their own monitor, which is metric. And all we worry about is what comes across the scale.
All right, but is there, but I'm saying, is there monitors following from county?
Yes.
I think we need somebody else to weigh in on that for us, Fonda, to be honest with you.
Aren't you the debris monitor?
No, I'm the debris.
I mean, you're the consultant.
Yes, recovery consultant. Okay, so Gulf County Monitor wants to stage temporary debris at our sites, is that what you're saying? What do they want?
DRC, it's.
Okay, so it's a state contractor, right?
Yes.
Okay.
DRC, they're bringing it in, they have their monitors set up. When it comes across, they look at the trucks.
Okay.
And they dispose them in the back of the landfill.
Okay, and that's for.
We do not stage it, we work it in as soon as it hit the ground.
Okay, so this is Gulf County debris and DRC is the state default debris hauler for Gulf County since they did not have a pre-award contract? Is that what this is?
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't have anything to do with us. I mean, that's certainly up to you guys if you want to take their debris. But as far as our stuff, I mean, just don't mix them. You know?
That's correct. All state debris is DRC, Coastline, CRV, Robertson, all of them is being, is being disposed of and worked.
I might be wrong, but I think it's going to be a byproduct of the fact that the state now is doing the contracts for all of these fiscally constrained counties. I don't, I mean, even if we don't like it out there, there's nothing we're going to do about it. They took 100% of the liability and 100% of the cost. They got to put it somewhere. I really don't think we want to get in that kind of fight, but that's a deal.
But what, um.
It's the state we're talking about.
Let me ask you a question. Did the state tell them to bring it in or they brought it in? How this occurred?
Yeah, I have not spoken with anyone from the state. It's just the truck showed up and we made a call to one of the, the guy, the Gandian. And they said DRC told them to haul it to us.
Okay, DRC.
It's a state contractor.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If I might, have you spoke to anyone in Gulf County at their landfill about why they're not accepting any of the Gulf County debris in the Gulf County landfill?
What's that now?
I don't think they have a landfill.
Yes, that's correct.
They do not have a landfill in Gulf County? They just have a transfer station?
They have a transfer station.
Okay.
That might be a problem.
Well, I know when I went through Gulf County, I saw some aspirate signs just north of Port St. Joe on 71 saying, you know, turn here.
That's the transfer station. That's the transfer station.
Okay. I think we need more information, first of all, if the board would allow me to contact DOT General Counsel and find out, get some instructions from Mr. Eric Fineman. I've been talking to him on some other issues related to storm debris and we could fold this question into that conversation.
Okay, I'm going to need a motion for Mr. Schuler to get in contact with the people, the right people.
Subway.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, after Mr. Matt, the lawyer, to get in contact with the right people so we know what's going on and if this going to start and do we suppose to help them out or whatever.
And I can say this too, Mr. Noah, I'm not opposed to helping out our neighbors, but when we have the debris like we do on the sides of the road and stuff, you know, we kind of like got to help ourselves first.
Yeah.
And then if we've got any kind of spare space, then help somebody else. But, I mean, this is, doesn't need for Franklin County. I know DRC had the multiple contracts all the way across the 98th quarter, but at the same time, Franklin County's got to look out for themselves.
And we're limited to so much space. We ain't got so much space out there in the landfill.
Right.
And we don't want them, we can't take it all up with the surrounding counties.
Pam may have the reason why it's going on. Do you have a chipper at the landfill? Are we chipping our stuff? Is DRC chipping the stuff in the back?
No.
Or we're not?
No, it's crowded, Goff is chipping.
Okay.
Fonda, what are they bringing in? Are they bringing in?
Sanding.
That's why I said what it is.
That's why I said what it is. I was thinking if they were bringing in vegetation, there's no reason DRC could have a chipper and burn it and put, and it's expensive to put up a curtain and all of that, but that might be part of it. But if it's mixed debris, then that's, they don't have anywhere to put it. But I agree with y'all. I mean, if you look, go down 98 between Caribou and East Point, it's just so much mixed debris on the side of the road.
It is the same.
They've not picked up yet that has still got to come to our landfill.
I know. We still, some of us in the north haven't got first round yet.
We're getting yours.
You better. I don't want to have to burn it.
We don't.
Can I say something? Something to consider when you think about taking other counties debris? If you look at Bay County, they've got way more debris than they can ever handle in a landfill. You might be setting a precedent for what you're going to have to take in the future.
That's what I think.
I think this is the beginning of what are we going to do because it's too much as a state.
Yeah.
So, so consider that when you're thinking about your decision.
And we'll be close, maybe they'll fill us up where we can.
They won't have, they won't have to bring for that to help.
But, any more discussion on that?
So, y'all, you need me to just hold off if they come in?
We invoked it, yeah. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? That motion carries. So Mr. Schuler, you take care of that and get back with us.
Yes, sir. I'll probably send him a text message question while we were having that discussion.
Okay.
Technology.
Exactly.
Anything else, Mr. Davis?
Other than, I know Alan spoke on behalf of the county, but Commissioner Sanders, we will miss you. And from the heart, I want to let you know that, you know, even though we didn't see eye to eye at once upon a time.
That's right.
But it helped me to learn to run the department efficient. I didn't understand the way you felt at the time, what I do now. And I hope you enjoy, I guess, like Commissioner said, ain't no retirement, it's a vacation.
Just a vacation.
But whichever one you chose, enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fonda. And you have done, I have to say, you've done an excellent job. So if I helped you take it to a different level?
You did.
That's good.
Yes, ma'am.
Always the best. And you know what I always say, always do the job right the first time and then you don't have to worry about coming back.
That's right. Thank you.
Same in taxpayer dollars like that. Thank you, Fonda.
Keep up the good work.
Okay.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Pam Bonilla, President-elect of the district.
Our first item is something I've asked.
Yes, Alan did.
Attorney on how we're going to deal with it. So during the hurricane, and Jeannie is a product of this, she signed a task order with C.D. McGuire. C.D. McGuire is the person that we went through to handle our emergency recover. And, but the contract with C.D. McGuire, the selection of C.D. McGuire did not involve any money. It wasn't until we had a hurricane that then money would be dealt with. And so the task order is where the money is. And so during the hurricane, during the crisis that we were invoked in, and she and the chairman had spoken with this, she signed a task order for C.D. McGuire to initiate their efforts down here. And so I just need to get into the record so that when they send their first invoice, which hasn't occurred yet, that Pam Aaron will then know that the board has approved this task order. And so the purpose of this discussion here is to get into the record. And I'll defer, how will we do that?
Well, I received a communication yesterday morning from the clerk's office that the report did not come in in time to be in compliance with the county's public comment policies. My recommendation is Pam makes her presentation. The vice chairman will then call for public comment before the board takes action on this matter. But I do agree with Alan's presentation, the task order was required to be issued during the declaration of emergency. I think that Pam's actions under chapter 253, which governs, you know, the response to emergency situations was proper, but we do actually need that action ratified and approved by the board as Mr. Pierce has presented to you here this morning. So Pam, with that?
With that being said, okay.
You don't need to read the whole thing.
How much, did how much the task?
It's $253,000, not to exceed amount, but we are only responsible for 12 and a half percent of that because it's.
12 and a half percent?
So that's $30,000. So our exposure is $30,000, if it goes to 12, if it goes to full amount of money. And it's an hourly, I don't know how.
It's an hourly rate, yes.
It's hourly rate, so they don't know how much they work. And it's a, over a six-month period, it's not.
I don't mind making a motion, but I'm going to have to ask the public comment first.
Any public comments? Any public comment on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, given the circumstances of the emergency order and all that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the task order that has been basically ratified for the Emergency Management Department.
Task order number.
Number one.
I've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion? If there's no discussion, the vote, all in favor?
Nah.
All opposed? That passes in hand.
Hey, Commissioners, um, I have a second item that came across my desk. Uh, Reverend Themo had, uh, tried to get on the agendas last week and, and didn't get on it. And then, after speaking to Michael Moron, Michael instructed him to come out and talk to me about what they wanted to do at, out at the old work camp. After sitting down and him having a discussion and him explaining to me exactly what they wanted to do, uh, they wanna make a disaster recovery faith-based base camp out there. Uh, it's not a tent city. They want to, uh, use dorm A. And, um, I explained to him that, uh, the county's issues on the planning and zoning, um, Gary wanted to have a full inspection of that facility, and that he need to speak to Gary about what exactly, uh, our, uh, he needed to have inspected, and then, uh, we would need for the board to instruct Michael Schuler to write a MOA with the county and the Methodist Disaster Recovery Group. My understanding from him is they, they would pay for the cost of having it inspected and then for any repairs to that, uh, building. But I will let, if you don't mind, I'll let the Reverend, uh, speak on exactly what their plans for that building is. To me, it's a win-win situation for the county.
Come on up to the podium, Reverend.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Give me your name for the record, please, sir.
Reverend Themistocles Patriotis. Not gonna go into a lot of rhetoric with this, uh, you know, we all know where we are. It's day twenty-seven. We're marking time, says Michael. And I'm here to request the Board of Commissioners of Franklin County approve the Methodist Church to use the Bay City Work Camp as a disaster mission base for supplies and volunteers. Methodist Church at the corner of Fifth and Ninety-eight has been there since eighteen thirty-nine. I've been the pastor for twelve years. I came here in two thousand and six, just after Dennis. And Reverend Dr. John Sink was disaster coordinator for the Methodist Church in Franklin County at that time, and distributed almost a hundred thousand dollars in aid directly to local citizens, as well as doing disaster assessments. Disaster response looks different today. Since October fourteenth, First United Methodist Church has been a host and a staging point for local volunteers, as well as trained early response teams. I'm wearing a green shirt, 'cause they all wear the green shirts. The past twenty-three days, we have trained local volunteers as appointed distribution, served over two hundred families a day with food, resources, uh, non-perishables, cleaning supplies, et cetera. Nine teams served over five days, and that's the equivalent of fourteen hundred and eighty-seven hours of volunteer time. All that goes toward the FEMA. I'm wearing the green shirt. These green shirts have been seen around this county for twenty-three days, cutting trees off of homes, tarping roofs, mucking out flood damage, raking, hauling debris, and most importantly, praying with people. We have hosted and deployed early response teams at our church. We've been the host site. Last night, we had twenty-six volunteers sleeping in Sunday schoolrooms in the fellowship hall. Teams from Florida, Georgia, Tennessee, Kentucky, Arkansas, and Louisiana, eighty-one people over twenty-three days, all trained volunteers. That's two thousand and two hundred and four hours of volunteer time. Franklin County Methodist Church is deploying early response teams, with or without base camp. We'll be here for the long haul, at least five years. We'll be moving into long-term recovery, bringing in long-term recovery teams and training volunteers. The counties and communities to our west and to our north are worse off. We all know it. We've all seen it. We're using Crisis Cleanup, and I met with Tress last week, and we switched to Crisis Cleanup, which is a web-based, um, source of private individuals reporting their needs. It went in one week from twelve thousand cases to fifteen thousand. And according to Crisis Cleanup, they're receiving fifteen hundred calls a day, and they cannot keep up with the calls. You have not seen debris yet. You haven't seen debris coming off these houses and off these businesses. That isn't even reached the street yet. My crews, and they're running tractors, they're running bobcats, they can't keep up with it. They're cutting and they're dropping stuff, and they're hauling what they can, some of it in wheelbarrows, okay? But this thing's just starting. Crisis Cleanup has asked us to employ, to, uh, to get volunteers here in Franklin County to use the hotline to receive calls. Thir- fifteen hundred calls a day. In Franklin County, we went from twenty-nine to a hundred and twenty-two sites in one week. And it's still, I mean, when I called just to do quality control, I was on hold for eight minutes. They didn't get back to me for two days. That's how backlog they are. So, we're not seeing this stuff coming out of the woodwork yet. With this base camp, we will also be strategically deployed for short-term early response team and long-term response teams, not only for Franklin County, but for Port St. Joe, Cape San Blas West, and also for north. I had, uh, a team come from Florida. There were six guys. It came from Sun City Center. And, uh, they spent two, two rotations here, and they took seventeen volunteers, trained volunteers, to Quincy yesterday. So, uh, we haven't even seen the stuff coming from Liberty and Gadsden and north of us yet. The base camp will create jobs for Franklin County. These people will be trained to be volunteer coordinators, construction coordinators, and case managers. When Irma hit last year, the Methodist Church created a, uh, system where they hired sixty full-time employees. Now, that's covering the, the state of Florida. It's a little bit more widespread. We don't think that the local need is gonna be that high, but the church is coordinating with Alabama-West Florida Conference. And Methodist Church in Florida, seven hundred churches, and Alabama-West Florida, it's six hundred churches. Globally, we're eighty million people. And today at noon, the head of global missions will be in Appalachia Cola to see what's going on. Okay? So, even though we're not on the news all over the place, as far as, uh, volunteer organizations, relief organizations, they understand this is a long-term recovery. According to Pam and Tress, we're the only volunteer organization on the ground. Is that correct?
The only one that's, uh, other than, that's actually out in the field doing manual labor. Now, we have Red Cross is here, and we've had the Salvation Army, and they've handed out food, and they've handed out mop buckets. But they're pretty much moving, still have a base camp here, just like what you're talking about, and working west, because we are further along than the other counties. But as far as, uh, being volunteer organization, boots on the ground, cutting trees, we do have, uh, the, um, Conservation Coalition. They are working. But again, you know, they are, uh, paid out of a grant with Duke Energy, so you can't really say they're volunteers, but they are working. But y'all are strictly volunteer-based.
We're strictly volunteer, and we're gonna stay that way. The Global Methodist Church, I'm gonna wrap this up real quick for you. Sees this as an opportunity to create a mission base here in Appalachia Cola. It's never been done here before. The closest mission base is Sager Brown in Louisiana. There is a depot in Decatur, Alabama, but that's just a depot for supplies. Uh, this has never been considered, never been done. We've never had an opportunity like this, and they really see it. I have, uh, representatives coming today from the Florida Annual Conference, from the district, and global as well. Alabama-West Florida, which, uh, is basically twelve miles west of here. Twenty-seven churches have been destroyed, and they have made a commitment, and they see this as a strategic deployment center to do the long-term recovery in Port St. Joe, Huachica, uh, Cape San Blas, and Mexico Beach. They have no place to deploy teams there. They have no place to stage volunteers there. So, uh, I'm asking you all to approve, the Methodist is using the Bay City Work Camp as a mission base. And then, to create this memorandum, I talked to Gary yesterday. I'm meeting Gary today at three o'clock. He sees no problem in the memorandum having a stipulation that we have a building inspection before we occupy it with volunteers. I talked to Duke Power. Uh, they're ready to connect it to power, but they need a blanket easement to run overhead lines to the buildings. Um, we can do this thing. It's ready to go. We've had volunteers in there. They have power washed the bathrooms. I think this is a reality. But, you know, this is kind of a point in time. So, it's gotta pull the trigger on this thing, or it's gonna move on.
How much, how much time you talking about, Reverend?
Sir?
How much time? I said, how long?
We're ready to go. We've been ready to go.
How long you?
How long you think you're gonna be there for? I think is what he's.
Well, when the trumpet blows, Jesus is gonna call us on.
So, forever.
I'm saying as long as it's needed, but, you know, you all have to decide how long this memorandum will be. If there's a time limit on the memorandum with a renewable, you know, I, I don't know. You know, this is a new stage for me. I'm a local pastor.
And before Attorney Schuler gets to the memorandum, let me explain to you in our, in our office what we're doing. Gary's gonna do a walkthrough today, uh, with them and inspect. The board all knows that that place was, was savage is not the right word, but for the way.
Ransacked.
Yeah, I mean, they pulled the, the wiring, the copper wiring. So, let me say, one thing I don't wanna add to keep me awake at night is I would hate, I would hate something happens and that building catches a fire once it's energized. So, that, that would be the worst thing ever. So, what, what, what I want Gary to do, what I instructed him to do, is make sure he does a walkthrough, he does an inspection before we even give temporary power to, so, because they need to check the water heaters, there's a series of things that they need to check. I wanna make sure, number one, we can isolate power to that specific dorm right now. And that it's safe to do that, and, and get whatever electrician is needed to put in the breaker box, to rewire, whatever it is. I wanna make it as safe for them as possible, 'cause what, it's eight years now since anyone has been in there?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and, and some people stole everything. Well, no, they stole the sink too. So, you know, there was nothing basically out there. Reverend Themo told me they have already done a lot of the work as it relates to the plumbing. That's a plus. That's a good thing. Gary doesn't think there's any structural issues. My concern is electrical. So, they hopefully, today, with the walkthrough today, and then tomorrow with Gary's recommendation, we'll be moving along in that direction.
So, it wasn't no wind, wind damage or nothing?
From what they, they've, what Reverend Themo, Themo's told me, no, you guys have pretty much walked through dorm, dorm one, correct?
Oh, with dorm A?
Dorm A, I'm sorry, keep.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's got a metal roof on it. It hasn't leaked.
Yeah. So, but Gary will do that.
We got four urinals, four, four sinks, four commodes, all functioning. We've shut every leak off in every building.
Yeah.
Um, we've had engineers there. I mean, a lot of these people that come are mechanical engineers, electrical engineers. Uh, they're people that have been doing emergency disaster work all over the world. So, they're not, we're not coming into this with eyes blind, or like, you know, looking for sugar plums here, okay? We understand this facility's been shut down. It's been dormant. We've been on the roof, repaired the roof of the, uh, of the warehouse. We've got four tractor trailer loads worth of materials in there. We've shipped out over two tractor trailer materials, okay? I mean, so, I mean, this is, uh, you know, thi- this isn't, we don't wanna get into a black hole either. But we're not gonna know what to do, we're not gonna know what's functioning until Duke Power runs power to the building. I mean, that's just the bottom line.
Mr. Schuler?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Wait, wait. Let me ask. Commissioner Mast. Be a Michael Director, Shuler, do the MOU.
We need to have, I think, licensed contractors go out there and look at that building first, and then have it inspected. I think it's premature to say, go ahead and go into the building until we know whether it's safe and habitable and up to code. I mean, I don't wanna slow things down. I mean, they're already out in field. They're working. What we're talking about is maybe slowing down, actually getting people in the building and moving forward with the lease. So, I would just be more comfortable as the attorneys, if we could get the licensed contractors out there first, determine what scope of work needs to be done, how much is it going to cost, and then move forward with the leasing issue from that point. Because I, I only learned about this basically yesterday afternoon and talking to Pam. I haven't had a chance really look at all the different issues that we need to look at, so.
Well, it's not gonna call the county, man.
No, there, my understanding is, is that once the scope of work is determined, that the, you know, the county would not be responsible for making the repairs, is my understanding.
Right, right, right.
Yes, that's, as far as I know, yes. As far as Pam know, but I get, our office concern is, is the safety. Once we get past the safety, and as Attorney, Attorney Schuler says, licensed electricians and everyone, and makes our building official happy and satisfied that it's safe, and I won't hear the fire trucks going in the middle of the night, we're good. I think it's an excellent idea what, what they're talking.
And that will give us time to sit down and work out whatever terms of the lease that need to be hashed out and brought back to the board in terms of insurance, and who's going to be paying for all the utilities and the waters, and, um, insurance coverages and things of that nature. I mean, you're talking, you're meeting again on the twentieth. I, I, I would like to think we get all this done by the twentieth, but I think you'd be hard pressed to get it done by the twentieth.
God building inspector, he can do all this.
My understanding is, we, Mr. Gary wants to have licensed contractors go out and make the determination of what the scope of the work is that needs to be done first, is what I've been told.
Well, let me ask a question. I, I ain't trying to be the bad guy, really, but is the county gonna charge, or do we make any money, or?
I don't think so, but.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, I think it was kind of be a even trade as to whatever they invest in improving the building, that would be their investment. If I'm wrong, somebody tell me I'm, I'm.
That's why, that's what I inferred yesterday. It was more of an in can.
Their investment, in kind, yeah. Their use will be because of their investment into, uh, uh, upgrading the building, I guess.
Well, they'll be paying then.
And this is, and this is recovery. This is recovery, and the recovery's gonna take years.
Like I said, I, I ain't trying to be.
No, I understand.
That's the question we have to ask.
I don't have no, and, and you know me, I tell it like it is. I don't have no problem with it, because I see it as, as, as helping. But at the same time, we've got to protect the county and make sure that that build, we're not putting somebody in there in an unsafe building. And that's my, that's my main concern. That would be my only main concern there. And if any bills are accumulated from it, then they would be responsible for whatever bills. It's gonna be there, like the power bill or whatever, okay? I don't, other than that, I don't have none.
And I thank y'all doing a good night.
Well, thank you. What, what kind of timeframe are you looking at?
I would like to ask a question.
And, and is, is the county therefore, is the county therefore taking it upon themselves to do the inspections and pay for them?
Those are some of the details that I need us to try and work out. Like I said, I, I basically got detailed information on this yesterday afternoon. My understanding was that, uh, the church had indicated that they were going to bring in the, the licensed officials or licensed contractors to look at the life safety issues, the electric, the plumbing, um, things of that nature.
I believe we can do that if we can get an MOU that says that. We get an MOU that says, oh, the, what are we doing? We get an MOU that says, okay, we can, we, we're entering into this agreement pending occupancy after the building inspection, et cetera. You're not gonna be able to get a building inspector to tell you anything till the power's run. They can't run the power till we have an MOU and a blanket easement. So, you know, there's some hoops that have to be jumped. So, if we can start with an MOU and with stipulations in it saying, okay, point A, point B, and point three, these are contingencies. If those are met, then we move on before it's occupied, before we have any issues. Does that make sense?
What I'm trying to suggest is, is staging it similar to what's being suggested, but step one would be to have the licensed officials go out, licensed contractors go out, look at all the life safety issues, and then once we determine whether it can or cannot be occupied, then move into the occupancy agreement. That, that's what I'm trying to do, as opposed to rolling it all into one agreement.
Reverend, can I ask you a question? Do you have any people that licensed by the state of Florida that can do that?
Yes. Yes. That's right. See, if we can get our own people who are licensed contractors to do this pro bono, then we're not looking at any cost.
What you think about that?
I'm suggesting, I'm, I'm just leery of the board making a final decision when we don't have all the information yet. But if the board wants to move forward, uh, and that, that's certainly a decision for the board to make. I mean, that is your authority. I'm just, I'm trying to be cautious on the life safety issue. You know, we, we've got this whole issue with occupying this public property and, you know, the recovery. And I would like, I don't know why we can't, you know, take a couple of days, for me at least, this is a new issue, take a couple of days, get more information. If things are urgent and we need to have a special meeting, I'm sure the chairman would offer us having a special meeting to deal just with this issue. But again, it's the board.
I think we, I think we need to do it ASAP, because we got a lot more crews coming in here to help this area recover and, and also, I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. If not, let's tell the Reverend we don't want it done, and, but let's not string him on.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. I meant this.
Appreciate it.
I know what you're talking about.
You know, I, I, I said like.
Straight forward.
It shouldn't take, how long you think it'd take for you to do your thing?
I can do the legal paperwork pretty quickly. What I don't know is how long it's going to take on the life safety issue to have those inspected and have whatever work that needs to be done performed, and then have that inspected. That's outside of my wheelhouse. And I was just, the reason I was being cautious is I don't know if that building can even be made to be habitable under the current, I don't know.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Let, let me say one thing that's not in the reverence, uh, in his wheelhouse. Your building official has to be the one that agrees that he is ready to put the green sticker on the meter to turn on the power. That's, that's, that's on the county. That's not on the reverend. That's on the county. So, my point is, Gary does a walkthrough this afternoon. I think he can have some type of report for me via you.
In the morning.
If you got, by the morning, he could kinda give me, okay, Michael, here's the things I think we need to address immediately. And then the reverend and Attorney Schuler could sit down and hash that out, and they want an interim agreement saying that, okay, we'll bring in our people, you know, as long as we move along, that, that's fine. I mean, again, we could call a special meeting this week. We could call, we have one, we already have a special meeting set up for the thirteenth. You guys have been meeting every week almost since this hurricane. So, you know, I mean, but I, I wanna be very, I'm very concerned about making sure that building is safe. And your building official is the one that has to say that. Nobody else, not the attorney, Reverend Themo, nope.
I wanna say, I don't, but I heard, all of, we wanna.
You're sure, Ken. I just wanna more to understand our role in this and what we're doing and the point I'm trying to get across.
Right. And, and part of the concern is if we say yes now, and then it turns out, based on the inspection, that, that the county has to tell them no, well, then you told them yes, and then you gotta take it back, and that's always a bad position.
Well, I think, I think he gets clear understanding that he knows if we, we don't get the, oh, okay, all right stuff from our building official, that it's a no. Well, I think, I think he gets clear understanding that he knows if we, we don't get the oh, okay, all right stuff from our building official, that it's a no-go. I think he knows that. He said it enough.
If I can, if I can say, no, if, if you're approving, moving forward with it, that's the first step, right? Working out the details of the, of the memorandum is just working out the details and making sure both parties are comfortable with, with what memorandum is. And that's, you know, Mr. Shuler producing a document and having the church legal look at it and saying, okay, yeah, we, you know, we gotta move this way or this way. We're, we're, you know, we're all in this together. Um, that's what I'm asking. Number one, you approve that, uh, that the Franklin County, this is in the best interest of Franklin County, that the Methodist, uh, would use this facility as a base camp. Not occupying it and not moving forward until all the stipulations that, um, are specified have been met.
Let me ask you, you just, are you, is y'all, how many dorms?
Sir?
How many dorms is out there?
Dorm A is got, uh, two sides, forty by sixty, forty by sixty. We can put forty, twenty to forty comfortably in each side.
No, what I'm saying, y'all, how many buildings you talking about?
One, just dorm A. When we met with Duke Power, just to look at it, they'd be running exactly what you said, just power to dorm A. But, you know, we're not there yet. Right now, it's, do you approve the concept?
Well, what I wanted to know. Make sure that they separated. Make sure there's a separation from the mother dorm.
Well, Gary has to go check.
When he check, that the power don't shoot over to them and cause some over there.
Exactly, that's, that was my concern, yes.
Well, let me ask a question, if I may. Uh, do we, is this something necessarily to vote on or can we just direct staff to proceed and try to check all the boxes?
I think that's what Attorney Shuler.
You know what I'm saying? Uh, do we necessarily devote on that attorney or can we just direct staff to proceed and try to see if we can work out those issues toward getting a memorandum?
That's my preference, is what you just said, is direct us to move forward, see if it's feasible and, and work out the details and then we'll come back to you with final decision.
Sounds good to me.
And I'll keep you guys updated step by step. I'll know by the morning what Gary, how Gary feels about it, okay?
Okay, that, that sounds like, that's what we'll do in, in the meantime, if it's feasible, if it's feasible. We can call a special meeting to enact what, whatever we need to do.
Can you give me a ballpark time, timeline?
I'll wrap this up as quickly, as best I can, hopefully. I make a motion that as soon as we hear from staff about how we can proceed, that this board will do its best to meet a special meeting as quickly as we can to try to resolve this issue.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
I'll keep you in the loop. I'll keep you in the loop as to what.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good luck, sir.
You believed in me when nobody else did.
I've always believed in you, Pam.
And you, uh, have been, uh, someone I looked up to because you were a female sitting on this board. And, uh, I will miss you, but I'm gonna be your neighbor.
Yeah, you gonna be my neighbor, six miles down the road.
I just want you to know that. I, I love you and you're not, was not only my commissioner, you are also, uh, my friend and my mentor. Thank you.
I love you, Pam, and I love your department, and y'all have done an excellent job. I don't think anybody could have done it any better. I am one of your advocates, I always will be because I know what it is to run an EOC. If anybody's been out there during a storm, and if you've been a chairman, Mr. Noah, you know, it is chaotic. And to have brought us through Hurricane Michael without any fatalities or anything like that, all that little stuff don't even matter. You know what I mean?
Thank you.
And so you did your job.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, keep up the good work.
Mr. Vice Chairman, can we do another switch on the agenda? Uh, your clerk has to be, has another meeting, so could she go skip? The openings aren't timed, sir? So, uh, if you would mind.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric.
After the clerk, we need to, uh, next on the agenda be Ms. Martha Johnson.
I appreciate this, um, taking me early because I do have another meeting I gotta be at. But I have seven resolutions for adoption on unanticipated revenue as part of the end of the year bookkeeping that involve funds that weren't included in the initial budget last year because we didn't know at the time they were gonna be received. All the funds were received and spent, and so to comply with Florida statutes one twenty-nine, we need to incorporate these into the prior budget. I'm not gonna read them all because it's just, it takes a long time, but they will all be incorporated into the minutes. But there were seven amounts of money received totaling five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty. And that was money from the Florida Department of Transportation for the Bay Shore Drive Sidewalk Project, from the Florida Department of State for the Armory Project, money from Capital Area Community Action Agency, that was, um, the purchase of the travel trailers for the East Point Wildfire. That was kind of a transfer of money through the county. Money from Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the Island View Park Project, money from Florida Division of Emergency Management, that was helped with the Okalotni Bay Boat Ramp and the Indian Creek Boat Ramps, money from Florida Department of Environmental Protection for D W Wilson Park, and money from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the Sea Turtle Lighting Project.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you, and again, Cheryl, I meant everything I said, and I know that I will still see you at ball games and different events throughout the county and.
You still got grandbabies that go to the ball game.
That's right.
Give me a hug. See you later.
And, uh, board, I just wanted to reiterate, I did not say it this morning, but, you know, we talked a lot about the hurricane and all the effects. But I am grateful for all our county workers, Pam and her staff, all our road department landfill. I, I've only heard good comments about all the county employees since the hurricanes, and thank you all for all your efforts.
And, and will you convey to, um, especially Ms. Carla Hand and Ms. Kathy Brown up in Liberty and County, and Gulf and, and Bay County, all hearts go out to them.
I will.
Because we know that they are the ones that suffered the devastation and also Jackson County too.
Yeah, we were blessed, thank you.
Yes, we are.
No items for your agenda today, but I did want to take the opportunity, just as others have to, on behalf of the Extension Service, express gratitude and thanks to Ms. Cheryl for all of her work for these years in this county. And not just the work that she does in the boundaries of the county, but serving on all of these boards and committees that are outside of the county. That's really important, and folks quite often don't realize how important that work is. In being represented there, uh, for Franklin County so that things can move forward on a lot of different levels beyond just the county boundaries, so thank you, Ms. Cheryl.
Thank you, Mr. Eric, and you also conveyed to Dr. Place and, and Dr. Pete that we enjoyed working with them all these years. And you may have got a little bit tizzyed at me about that car issue, but I put you to a different standard. I put you to a different standard and we got it done.
That's how you want him to ride.
Yep. It's all at how I want him to ride, that's right, that's right.
Thank you.
But no matter what, you know, my job up here is to look out for the people, and that's what I've done. And it's, it's kind of like a hard job to do sometimes, but we do it.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that too.
Thank you though, thank you for your kind word.
All right, next on the agenda, we got the opening of the request for qualification design service on County Road sixty-seven, the widening and the resurfacing project.
And basically, I'm just gonna read out the names to y'all. There's no money in here. This, it'll go to a review committee. Who will review and rank them and turn them back into the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a question before we start this?
Go ahead.
Do you remember when this got brought up? And I know, I think Clay was out there in the audience too. I brought up, I was concerned with just the widening and the repaving and that I needed to be milled down and put a new base up underneath that. You remember, and I asked y'all to contact, how can we?
Oh, yes, you did, Commissioner.
Remember, did y'all ever contact somebody?
Oh, please, let me, I'll have to ask Mark because I, I hope to God I passed on that message, but I will, Commissioner.
Well, because like I said, if you did a, if you're gonna do a resurfacing on sixty-seven, it's not gonna be any good unless you fix that base.
Okay, so we'll make.
Because it is awful, it's awful.
What about that base?
Yep, we'll make sure. Okay.
Okay, I mean, I'm just bringing that point out there, to the next commissioner, it may not mean nothing to him, but to me, it means a lot.
Yeah, that base would.
Yeah.
And we had four, so Mark's happy because, you know, DOT always wants three or more, so.
Yes, so we got four?
Yes, we got four, so Mark is a happy man, when he's happy. So, uh, the first one is Gresham Smith, and they're out of Tallahassee, Florida. Again, again, Commissioner, I'm just reading the names, there's no need to open up, this will go to the review committee, okay? The second one we received was, well, the second one we have here in front of us, is, this was submitted by Dewberry Engineers. They're out of Port St. Joe, Florida.
Wow, yeah, rough delivery.
Mailman that are coming with this. Um, the third is Baker Design Build, and it's not on the outside. Their label didn't include the address. Would you want me to open it to see where they're, they're from? Is that necessary?
I would.
No.
So the third, Baker. You wanna feel good, you wanna read the fourth one?
No, 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 you've done a great job. Whatever it is, you've done a great job.
And the fourth and the final one is Genesis Group, and they are out of Tallahassee.
Genesis.
Yeah.
And who's the review committee, Mike?
The review committee, as it stands right now, will probably be, uh, myself, someone from possibly in the finance office and probably someone from the road department. We haven't picked those two yet. The prob, the reason being, Mark, Nor, Whitney can be part of this review committee because they were part of the, um, advertising, the RFQ.
Pleasure to vote.
I make a motion that we turn this over to the review committee to come back with a recommendation.
Probably Aaron, more than likely.
Aaron, then?
Probably Howard himself. I'm probably gonna tag Howard in this one.
I just wanted to get the review committee in, the official.
Okay, so myself, Aaron, and Howard, as of right now.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on it?
I think so.
All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Okay, nah.
To me, Commissioners.
Allen and Dunhill, right?
Yes.
Next on agenda be Mr. Michael Maroon.
That'd be me.
County coordinator.
All right, so the first action I have, you have to take public comment because it was not on my report. Um, it is board action for ratification for the extension of the local state of emergency declaration by the chairman pursuant to authority delegated to him by the board.
Okay.
Second.
Public comment? If there are any public comment? If there are no public comment, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item, which actually is one in my report, the county be installing beer resistant kits in Carvel on Saturday, November seventeenth from eight thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. This event was originally scheduled for Saturday, October thirteenth, but was postponed due to Hurricane Michael. Commissioner Massey was able to secure the pavilion in, in the Carvel Firehouse parking lot for us once again. And will be joining Parks and Recreation Staff and Ms. Whitley Barfield from the Administrative Office to assist residents with the installation of the kits. So, that's November seventeenth.
Keisha said that no one ever uses it hardly, so we first went there, we got it.
Good, all right, we'll mark it off if we have to, sir.
I hope she said that hardly no one uses it.
Thank you. Um, item, item number two, Ms. Lisa Lance, your director of libraries, informing that due to the last minute technical delay, she received a twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen state aid to libraries grant agreement last week instead of the usual August date. Since it was late, she asked for the chairman, chairman's and clerk's signatures as soon as possible to allow adequate time for submission of the grant. Board action to ratify the chairman's signature on the twenty eighteen, nineteen state aid to libraries grant agreement.
Pleasure to vote.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Masters. All in favor? All opposed, that carries.
Final item, at your October twenty-ninth, special meeting, the board authorized DEO's CDBG grant modification number three to reinstate the agreement as though it had not expired. Unfortunately, that specific language was not in the signed version of the agreement. DEO has added that language and requested that it was signed as soon as possible to continue with the process of making the funds available for purchase of the permanent homes for those affected by the East Point Fire. Board action to ratify the chairman's signature on the amended version of modification number three.
Second.
Miss one line and they had to add it in with the, get it re-signed.
All right, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
Commissioners, that ends my report.
All right, that concludes Mr. Maroon's report. Anything from the commissioners for Mr. Maroon?
Just one thing, Michael?
Yes, ma'am.
Keep your nose to the grindstone.
Okay.
Keep your nose to the grindstone. You do what you gotta do, take care of these five commissioners.
I will.
Because you're gonna be the one that took that man's place to do the job, and it's a hard job to do.
Trust me, I, yes, ma'am.
Don't overwhelm yourself. Don't overwhelm yourself, take what you can, get it done, and don't worry about the rest.
Okay.
You see, it'll all take care of itself. You have been an excellent county administrator. You have been very communicative, just like Alan, and that's what it takes for a commissioner to do their job, is communication, am I right? And that keeps the communication levels going and with all the department heads and everything, everything will be fine. But let me tell you something, you are gonna be allowed to call my house if you need me.
That's why I'm not here with a goodbye speech. You're gonna hear from me every day. There's no reason to have a goodbye speech here.
You are gonna be allowed to call me, and I will give you some consolation and consolment when you need it.
Yeah.
And everything, but, you know, and one thing I want to stress with everything that's going on, we got some big things going on in the canyon, and we did not know that this would happen. We did not know we was gonna have a major hurricane. Please, please, just as soon as tomorrow morning gets up, engage that new commissioner and get them started on what they need to know. Get them started on the history of everything to where when they get in here and sit down, they're gonna know what you're talking about. Because it's like Mr. Noah says, it's, it's more than just an election. It's more than just that. You find out, yeah, you, you beat the incumbent, in this case, they didn't beat the incumbent. But anyway, um, but you find out you don't really know nothing at all. Ain't that right, Mr. Noah?
That's right.
What you thought you knew, you didn't know, and what you did know, it ain't relevant to what you do, you know? So anyway, engage the new commissioner just as soon as tomorrow morning rises around and tell them the Commissioner Sanders said, contact them because you need to work with them and, and everything, so anyway. You've been good, you've been good, and I'll never forget you. I'll be around to see you.
Oh, I won't let you forget me, trust me. And it's, it's, it's interesting that you say that because Commissioner Jones, that sounds like words you have told me. You thought you knew everything, but when you sat in that seat.
Yeah, he said like this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, and, um, don't worry, you're not gonna lose my speed dial, you're not gonna lose a speed dial space in my car.
Yeah, you just have to.
It's a different ballgame, you just.
It is.
Different ballgame. All righty. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Shuler, the county attorney.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I do not have a report for the board, but, uh, I do remember the first thing that Commissioner Sanders told me.
You know.
Above all else.
Protect the board at all costs.
That's correct, and I will continue to do that.
And let, if you, will it allow me to comment to Mr. Schuler? Hey, granddaddy.
Thank you.
I heard you had a grandbaby. Your daughter had a grandbaby. Ms. Ava?
That is correct.
Ms. Ava Barnes? Oh, and she's precious?
You're gonna fall already.
You can see it, as soon as I saw it, I had to call him, say, I said, hey, granddaddy, oh, Lord. But no, Michael, you have been well representing the county for many years. And I will tell you one thing, and I know this will make you feel good. Your granddaddy and your daddy would be proud of you and proud of your brother. And you just keep on doing the work of the people here in Franklin County and give them the best legal advice to this board that you can. And like you say, protect the board at all costs.
That's what you taught me.
I taught you that.
Yeah, the, you mentioned that among, among the things that Dad told me when I took the job were two things. And one is humorous, the other one's much more serious. The first thing he told me is, watch out, Michael, Allen talks too much. Best to humor your part, the serious part was, he said, Michael, Cheryl's extremely smart, listen to her, and I had.
Listen to, thank you. Yeah, and like I said, I've done a lot of tears, and let me say, my tears are not sadness tears. My tears is I'm going into another phase of my life, and I'm going into a phase of my life that my mom and daddy never got to enjoy. And so with that, you know, if you, if you can relate, it, it's heart wrenching. But at the same time, it's like I said this morning, the one thing, the one thing, there is two things in my life as far as a Commissioner that I was concerned about. And that was Wayne's Hospital and Alligator Point. For twenty years, after every storm, I have been down there at Alligator Point. Every storm. And when those folks come five days after a storm and we were still reeling and said, you didn't care about us. And then I said, what? Yes, I did. I was there. Where were you? That's what it's all about. And for a Commissioner to sit in this district, and I'm gonna be honest, quite honest and frank, it's gonna be hard. It's gonna, Allen, you know what I'm talking about. It's gonna be hard. So, board members, I'm asking you to support them as much as what you can, the new Commissioner, as much as what you can. But always make the decisions from the information that your staff has given you and from the knowledge that y'all know. In other words, don't let them go off the end and have some, something they wanna do and they don't have the knowledge about it. So, be careful, you know, tread lightly, but, but y'all just keep, let me tell y'all something. From my first board, which was Jimmy Moskona, Bevan Putnall, Eddie Kramer, and my favorite, Clarence Williams. Do y'all realize that when I came on board, and I'm gonna do a little history because y'all need to listen to this, in 1998, this is the last time y'all gonna get it, in 1998, I came on board as the first woman elected in Franklin County. But you know what we had? We had Clarence Williams be elected the first black chairman of the board. So, when we sat here, we made strides. We made strides in, in the political arena in Franklin County that day. And that is something that I have been very proud of. Somebody asked me, said, well, what is one of your most proudest moments of being a Commissioner? I can't tell you, every one of them is proud, but one of the most proudest moments that I've ever been is when Nikita and Andy Williams called me up and asked me to do the eulogy because that was their daddy's request for Cheryl Sanders to do his eulogy when he died. That's how much Clarence Williams cared about me and thought about me. And the thing about it is, is from Jimmy Moskona on down to Ricky Jones, we're family. We are from the grassroots of this county. We know the needs, we know the wants, we know the desires, and we're here, and we're gonna fight for them. And we're gonna still be fighting. I was fighting when I came on this board. I'll be fighting when I go off. And that's the way it is. But anyway, y'all just, y'all are good Commissioners. Y'all listen, y'all, and see, that's the thing, that's, do y'all realize that's the reason why I ran for county commission? Is the commission was hearing them, but they weren't, they were listening to them, but they wasn't hearing what the people were saying. Allen, you remember? They wasn't hearing them. Well, they got to where they heard, and I'm just proud of it. And William, you got Caribou, you got Caribou on your back now, you got to take care of them.
I forgot them.
I know you did, I know you did. And you do that, but anytime y'all need any help, y'all just let me know. Like I said, I can't lobby y'all, but now y'all know, every now and then, my roads got to get graded and everything else like that because I still do pay county tax.
Is that considered lobbying?
No, no, and I didn't vote for that either.
Well, actually, you said that the data was not lobbying.
I know, but I just want, I just want to tell y'all, guys, I love y'all to the hilt. Y'all are in my thoughts and prayers all the time, and I hope my prayers at some point in time give you strength to make it another day because it's hard. But Cheryl Sanders represents the hardest district, I think the hardest district in Franklin County. It, we do, and, and that's what I said. I wish, I only wish the people would have came around twenty years ago. We would have had Alligator Point solved. But thank you, Mr. Chapman, for letting me speak a little bit.
All righty. Congratulations, Grandpa, Papa.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Commissioners' comment.
That's what I had to say.
Oh, I got one, Michael, to tell you, you'll find out about the, the booths out there.
The?
On the highway.
Yes, I talked to Howard yesterday. They're gonna try and move them, they're talking, Commissioners, he's referring to Lombardi Park, you know, when it, Hurricane Michael, it floated some of those boards across the street. Howard is gonna try his best to work on it today. As a matter of fact, I need to get, I'm glad you reminded me of that. He's to get them back into Lombardi Park, is what he does, but yes, sir.
Okay, well, I tell the people they, they gonna pick them up.
Yeah.
All right, any more Commissioner comment?
Just one more. Ms. Laurie, thank you. Thank you, been there a long time, taking notes for Commissions.
Actually, Commissioner, she's gonna outlast us all because she was here when I was here.
That's right.
Already here.
That's right.
And she's gonna be here. I don't know, it's gone a long time.
Well, you know.
Go back to what Dad said.
Yeah.
Stop this short, though.
Well, and, and see, y'all gotta realize, the thing, between me and Allen, we fifty-five babies, so I ain't no telling how long y'all gonna be here, you know? And I'm telling you, but you know, somebody said, you know, as y'all all know, my dad was county commissioner many years ago, and when I came in, I felt like, you know, oh, Lord, I'm just gonna be here four years, and then twenty years later, here I am, still sitting here, and I'm fixing to go, you know? So, anyway, but God, God has surely blessed us. As long as you keep them number one in your life, you're gonna, you're gonna survive. And even though you don't think you can survive, hey, you always do, but always, always make your decisions with your mind with full knowledge and a full loving heart, and you'll, you'll be okay.
Once again, congratulations, Commissioner Sanders.
I love you, Mr. Noah.
And that, the meeting is adjourned. That concludes the meeting.
Yep.